Roll call, please.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Mobley.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Trent?
Here.
Now, we have oral comments. Anybody have any comments that's not related to the agenda?
Public comment?
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Chief, City Manager, City Supervisor, Lieutenant, ladies and gentlemen. You all know my name, James Graham, Vice President of Riverlife Foundation. Please bear with me, my voice is a little gurgly. But, Riverlife, we've been doing cleanups for almost a year now, and I had asked the city to give us a chance to show them how dedicated we are to cleaning up the city and help making it safer. We have done that, and we've done it with zero funding. The city has paid for the garbage. That's the only funding that we've received to do our cleanups. I am so thankful that we have a good city manager, mayor, chief of police, and city supervisor Bob Knapp has been awesome and supportive. Property owners need to be held accountable for allowing homeless encampments on their property and doing nothing about it. If they do not do anything to prevent it, they should be held accountable for the cleanups that pay for the garbage, that is, left over and over again every month by the same people. Riverlife has been doing all these cleanups and using our own money and volunteers, but now is the time to ask the city for more support and some funding to do these cleanups. It's not cheap to do. We have insurance for our trailer to pay for and other things, and I would ask the city to have a special meeting with Riverlife Foundation to discuss the future of Riverlife Foundation. I don't think the city should be paying another organization a yearly salary while Riverlife Foundation does all the work. That needs to be discussed. Also, we need more help from law enforcement to clear these camps before we go in, so we don't have to deal with occupied camps, and we can just go clean up the mess they leave behind. There's Roundup in Strong's Creek they've spilt in it. Also, we need to figure out some solution to help homeless people with some kind of services and get people that actually want help the help they need. The ones that don't want help should be held accountable for repeatedly littering up camps. And the last thing I have to say is most of these homeless encampments are along the creeks, mainly Strong's Creek. I've seen needles floating down the creek, and now there's Roundup in the creek. Code enforcement needs to step up and do something about it. There is a huge, like dug-in cellar down there behind Safeway in the corner behind the mall, and I've informed people about it for the last two years. Nothing's been done about it, including fishing game. And now it's even bigger. They're digging it out more. It's an environmental violation. It's right next to a creek. I called fishing game several times with no response. We would appreciate all the support we can get, and thank you for the support that you have given us. I called fishing game today, and I made a top priority for them to get back ahold of me. Needles floating down our creek and Roundup in our creek, and they're putting their poop in the creek. Something's got to be done about all this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, everyone. I'm Jennifer LaRue, Sean's fiance when he passed away, and Executive Director of Riverlife Foundation. James pretty much summed up everything that I was going to say. I just did want to let you guys know that it was pretty upsetting. I got a call from one of John Shelter's employees the other day saying that they were his employee, and he had mentioned that he had got a $15,000 contract from the city, and I don't know how true that is, but it was just heartbreaking. You know, we've been doing the cleanups, and we've been consistent with them, and I've been, you know, the other board members, you know, they helped too, but I've been responsible for the nonprofit insurance, the registration of the vehicles, and, you know, maintenance, and there's just a lot of costs associated with running a nonprofit, and so I'm just, you know, we want to keep Sean's legacy going, and that's what he would have wanted, and just because he's gone doesn't mean that we can't do that. So I'm just, would hope that we could get put on the agenda for next month and see what our future is for Riverlife. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Can I just say, Jennifer, feel free to reach out to me, and we can make a time to get together, but we'll do that before it comes to a council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
All right.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank all of our mayors, council members, supervisors, and public safety, and community members, community civil servants. Thank you so much. My name is Dr. Katerina Kine, and on Saturday, I got the opportunity to volunteer with Riverlife, and that was the first time that I have ever done a trash cleanup. And it sounds like it was a special kind of day because instead of just a trash cleanup, there was also an eviction process of people that are actually living in the encampments. And it sounds like that was the first time that Riverlife had had to occupy that dual role. And so I went to clean up trash. I saw people being arrested. I saw needles everywhere. The police officers did come out, and they were supportive. They were very kind to the people that they arrested, but it really changed my perspective. My husband and I are property owners of the 900 neighborhood. That's what we call it. It's in that South Fortuna Boulevard area next to Burger King, and so we are adjacent to two derelict property owners, the property folks that own the Burger King, and then the trustees that own the green space behind us. So in 2018, we had a baby. We were so excited to buy our starter home in Fortuna on a quiet cul-de-sac next to a creek, and imagine our surprise when we found out that we were essentially moving into another situation, kind of like Eureka, where there's a big green space and lots of homeless encampments. I didn't even get to ever go into the woods because I was so scared until I was with Riverlife and was shocked at even how big the encampment situation was back there. I have a six-year-old child. My husband and I are dedicated community members, and it's clear that Riverlife needs help. I think with a public-private partnership to help them with Sharps disposals, reporting, whether there's unlawful weapons or unlawful activity, they were clearly not safe out there. They weren't able to dispose Sharps properly at all. There was no Sharps containers. There was no resources other than calling the police off their duties to come and arrest homeless people. I think that they really have an opportunity to be a revenue-generating nonprofit where they do take on the most of the property management for these derelict properties, but they would need a public-private partnership that helps them with the technical assistance to find the grants and eventually become a sustainable revenue-generating nonprofit. I think that's the critical piece. Instead of constantly asking for money, helping them be the property managers slash private security firm for these nuisance properties, and actually creating a way that they can be self-sustainable and help the community and have the reporting relationships that they need to report the environmental issues, the unlawful activity, and thank goodness, they were actually safe in that situation on Saturday because it was really, really scary to have active tenants in those areas. That was the first time I've ever encountered a situation like that, and, you know, I'm going to stick with it and support our community. I can't do once a month, but maybe quarterly, but we really want to, if we're going to engage community members to see a situation like that and really lift the curtains off of the new Fortuna that I saw, I just really think that we need to come together as a community and figure out a way that we can do some short-term investments through grant funding, sponsorships, and other fundraising, but a long-term handoff where we help them become a sustainable revenue-generating nonprofit. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. I just want to say that the county is actually, right now, in the process of possibly their Measure Z funds hiring a grant service that can be used by, like, organizations like this. So it's still in the process of being approved, but you can apply through the county, and either myself or Michelle Bushnell, our supervisor, you could talk to either one of us, and we could get this set up, so you could actually contact them and to see if they have a grant that possibly could help you with this too, besides talking to our city manager. Is there any other comments?
Can I say one more thing? Congratulations to the chief.
New subject. I would just like to welcome Chief Day back to town. It's good to see his smiling face, and thank you, Matt, for everything you did while he was off learning the FBI.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we now have a proclamation for the American Red Cross Month.
Thank you. I'll be reading this. In recognition and support of American Red Cross Month, March 2024, and whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Fortuna and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering, and whereas today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they step up through the Red Cross in California Gold Country region to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. And whereas through their voluntary and selfless contribution, they make a lifesaving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crises. And whereas we hereby recognize this month in March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community, now therefore be it resolved that Tammy Trent, by virtue of the authority vested in her by the laws of Fortuna and California, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Red Cross Month, and encourages all citizens of Fortuna to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Signed this 18th day of March 2024 in the City of Fortuna, State of California. And I believe Tracy O'Connell is here to receive this.
Thank you very much. Do you have something to say? Take your opportunity.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So thank you, Mayor Trent, and members of the council, chief, and staff, and friends and neighbors. My name's Tracy O'Connell. I live in Heidsville. I'm a Red Cross volunteer, and I appreciate the opportunity that you've taken a couple minutes here of your busy agenda to call attention to what the Red Cross does, and we reach out and ask for these opportunities to put this information in front of people for two reasons. One is so that perhaps if you know somebody who needs our services, it will be more top of mind, and also, we hope if you or someone you know has a few hours of bandwidth that they might want to volunteer, we need volunteers because we're only as good as the force we have and enable to respond. So a lot of people say, well, you know, Fortuna, we've been pretty lucky, things don't happen, but people here respond where things happen elsewhere. So we've had people locally who've gone to, for instance, Lahaina in Hawaii, which, by the way, still has a Red Cross presence on the ground because all these weeks and months later, there's still people who need sheltering. And we took in 85 families in Rio Del that were left without a home after the earthquake 15 months ago when they came to Veterans Pavilion or Firefighters Pavilion here in Fortuna. So these are examples of local people reaching out locally and long distance to help others, and we need that. We need more people to step up. So you might be thinking, gee, what could I do? And we got so many things, you know? We need people to talk to kids about safety. We need people who are bilingual. We need people who can drive a truck and take our supplies out to set up a shelter someplace in who-knows-where, and, you know, many, many other things. So we do a free smoke alarm installation, and so if somebody wants to go up a couple steps on a ladder with a drill, we got people doing that. And last year, we did like 297 free installations of smoke alarms in homes where they were requested. So that's an example. 1,400 people received information that somebody in the Red Cross provided locally in our three-county area about safety and disaster prevention. So those are just some of the examples that we do, and if you know somebody who could benefit from that, we hope you'll think of us, and if you know somebody who could help us out, we hope you'll think of that, too. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is consent calendar. We have 13 items, including all of our city monthly reports, and the 2023 general plan annual report, and the 2023 housing element annual report. Does council want to pull any?
I just have a general comment regarding storms and response.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I just want to recognize the park staff, Public Works, and PD through these last few storms we've had, and, I mean, it's not always in the road, but there's always limbs, trees, blockages, things that need responding to, and they did an admirable job all the way around, kept traffic moving, kept the parks open, kept dangerous things from becoming even more dangerous, so just thank you all.
There was a pretty bad slide, too.
Oh, that was part of it.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Any public comment on these items? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move to our city council business.
Want to vote on it?
Oh, I guess so. Guess we need to approve it.
I make a motion, we accept the consent calendar as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay. Now we'll move on. City Council Business. Authorize the city manager to execute a contract for professional service agreement with CSG consultant for SB 1383 compliance and franchise agreement development.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. I'll be providing the staff report for this item, and I will note that we have Kathleen Gallagher with CSG consultants on the phone, and so if you do have any questions at the end for her, she is available too, but I don't expect that we'll necessarily need her for that. So just a little bit of background, on June 20, 23, the council approved an agreement with CSG consultants to assist the city with the development of a franchise agreement to comply with the requirements of SB 1383. There was a previous staff report presented to council with all the detail of SB 1383 and all the elements that are included in the franchise agreement. The city is currently working to comply with the provisions of SB 1383, and we're operating under a corrective action plan with specific tasks and completion dates necessary for that compliance. If the city falls outside of those compliance steps, then we are subject to fines by Cal Recycle. We meet with them monthly right now, and we give them an update, and we are providing quarterly reports to them with what our anticipated timeline is on those tasks. Many of the tasks required of the city will become the responsibility of Recology, the city's waste hauler, through the franchise agreement. The negotiations have taken more time than expected with Recology. An additional effort is needed from CSG to assist with the development and negotiation of the agreement, the analysis of the cost proposal and rates, the analysis of the proposed franchise fee for SB 1383 services, and then also to provide a presentation to the city council. There's an agreement that is attached to the staff report that details the item and the cost for the additional work. Some of the things that have been particularly challenging are trying to figure out what the timing is of new trucks and where the waste is going to go. We're going to also receive a request really soon from HWMA. They want the city to join, and that will also impact our franchise agreement, the terms of the agreement, looking at how we can best orient those terms to keep the city competitive in the future. Public outreach and education, when should that come on to help educate the public in advance of services? Who's responsible for contamination of the solid waste, and how are we going to deal with reducing that? And then also the rate methodology and rate reviews. We're going to be going to a new rate structure that has reimbursement for actual costs plus an allowable profit percentage, so that's what we're looking at right now, and that's one of the things that we're still working through with Recology, and then also diversion requirements and who's responsible for those. So approving this contract with CSG will provide the necessary effort to update the franchise agreement and remain in compliance with the corrective action plan. The proposed cost of the services from CSG consultants is $12,980, and that's a not-to-exceed number. The city was notified on February 26 that we received a second grant from Cal Recycle. The first we received was $25,000, and it's paid for all the effort thus far with CSG, and the $75,000 would pay for the additional effort in addition to some of the other things that the city's doing, like edible food recovery. We're expecting to participate in a study to look at where the organic waste can go in Humboldt County in conjunction with the other jurisdictions who will also be working on it. We haven't recognized that grant revenue in the budget, but we will at a future date, but right now, we have enough budget identified, there's enough capacity in the current budget that we haven't spent to cover this cost, so there's not a supplemental budget request attached to this. So the staff's recommendation is that the council authorize the city manager to execute the professional services agreement with CSG consultants and continue to assist the city with SB 1383 compliance and the development of a new franchise agreement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
So if we can't get, if Recology can't get trucks, and we can't start the service, where does that leave us with the state? Because it's not Recology's fault, it's not our fault, it's the supply chain.
Right. So far, Cal Recycle's been open to that. Really, I think they want to see the demonstrated effort on behalf of the city and the solid waste hauler to make sure that we're doing those things, and so right now, we're able to demonstrate that, and we've been working well with Recology to work through these issues, and they're providing information to the city as well. So we're really passing that through to Cal Recycle. We're giving them what the timeline is for this work, and so far, they've been receptive, and they've been pushing those deadlines out, but I think really the enforcement effort is more focused on gaining voluntary compliance, even if it takes a little bit longer. So far, it doesn't seem like, you know, the big thing that's taking most of the time is right now, even if we wanted to start collecting the organic waste tomorrow, there's nowhere to take it. There's not a facility that we can take it to, so HWMA is in the process of converting their tipping floor. One of the other things we did with some of our solid waste fees is we put it towards a study to identify what those needed improvements are, and HWMA received, I can't remember, multimillion, I think it was a $2 or $3 million grant to do those improvements, and so they still have to implement those. So it just takes a long time. There's a lot of moving pieces, and really ironing out the details of the franchise agreements are really the only thing that falls into this item, but there's several other pieces. At some point in the near future, we'll bring a comprehensive update on SB 1383 compliance, but we're making progress in a lot of areas than just franchise agreement.
Thank you. We'll open this to public comment. Anybody have a public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the professional services agreement with CSG consultants and continue assisting the city with the SB 1383 compliance and development of franchise agreement.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Our next item is initiative number 21-0042A1, the Taxpayers Protection and Government Accountability Act.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. So I'll just be presenting a verbal report on this item, too. I think this is probably an item that the council and its involvement with the League of California Cities has heard a lot about over the last few years. It's one of the, I believe it's the number-one thing that League of California Cities is worried about, and they're advocating and requesting that the cities in California oppose this proposed ballot measure. So the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act would revise the California Constitution with provisions that limit voters' authority and input, and adopt new and stricter rules for raising taxes, and may make it more difficult to impose fines and penalties for violations of state and local laws. The measure puts billions of local government tax and fee revenues at risk statewide with related core and public service impacts, and the measure could have significant negative impacts on the city Fortuna and operations for core service delivery. Let's see, there's quite a number of things in the staff report. I won't read them all to you, but there's some of the things that will be challenging. I'll highlight a few of those. One of them, except for the licensing and other regulatory fees and charges may not exceed the actual cost of providing the product or service for which the fee is charged. And the language, you know, some of those things, they sound great, but the language is really tricky, and when you look at it, the actual cost is defined as a minimum amount necessary, and so then it would put the burden of proof on the city that the charge does not exceed the actual cost, which would be the minimum amount necessary, and it's changed to clear and convincing evidence. So it puts a city in a position where we'd have to defend each one of our fees if they're challenged, and then it's just an enormous amount of work. So the things that would normally fall on the city's fee schedule, each one of those things could be a potential, it could be potentially challenged and take a lot of work to go back and defend. It requires fees and charges paid for the use of local and state government property and the amount paid to purchase or rent government property to be reasonable. These fees and charges are currently allowed to be market-based, so example might be the River Lodge or some of the other cities' facilities. Whether the amount is reasonable, it would introduce a new legal standard aiming to force below-market fee and charge amounts. It must be proved by clear and convincing evidence. Again, the standard may significantly reduce the amount large companies may pay for the use of public property. It would prohibit fees on new development based on vehicle miles traveled, and so again, that's something that the city's having to analyze and think about how we handle under SEQA, but it makes it more challenging. Couple of the other ones, it expressly prohibits local advisory measures, which allow local voters to express a preference for how local general tax dollars would be spent. So how, you know, for an example, would be the city's Measure E. When that was put forward, it gave a list of things that that money would be spent on, so that would not be allowed. It would put a limit, new taxes would only be allowed for a specific time period, so that wouldn't necessarily impact how the city did its tax measure because the council felt that it was important to have a sunset period, but for other cities where they have a no-ending, it would impact other tax measures by other cities. Let's see. The League of California Cities, along with a broad coalition of local governments, labor, and public safety leaders, infrastructure advocates, and business strongly oppose this initiative. Local governments' revenue-raising authority is currently substantially restricted by state statute and constitutional provisions, including the voter-approved provisions of Prop 13 of 1978, Prop 218 of 1996, and Prop 26 of 2010. The Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act adds expanded restrictions on voters and the local tax and fee authority. And so really, what the league is with that is that we have existing regulations to protect them. So for example, if we want to raise water or sewer fees, that has to be done in accordance with Prop 218. Property taxes, if they're going to be increased, have to be consistent with Prop 13 that was passed in 1978. So the feeling is that the existing laws on the books are adequate for those protections. Some of the fees and charges that the city provides for core public services that could be affected include nuisance abatement charges, such as for weeds, rubbish, general nuisance abatement to fund community safety, code enforcement, neighborhood cleanup programs. We heard the desire for some of those to be funded, but again, to have some of those things challenged if the city was to put forth a fee for cleaning up some of these derelict properties, commercial franchise fees, emergency response fees, such as in conjunction with driving under the influence, document processing duplication fees, and facility use charges, such as fees for parks and recreation services, and garbage disposal and tipping fees. There, let's see. Under existing law, cities are required to provide due process before imposing a penalty or fine for violations of its municipal code, and again, the staff report details what those provisions are, and they are already not allowed to be excessive. So the fiscal impact of this is that the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act will take billions of dollars away from local government and services statewide, and so that's why staff is recommending that the council oppose this measure, and really to support the league in its effort. It's a huge lift, but to put this burden on the cities and make it more difficult to generate revenue, the city could be in a position in the near future to do that, and this could make it more And this could make it more difficult for the city to pursue revenue generation like it did through Measure E in the past, although the city's Measure E isn't impactful. This is retroactive and it goes back to 2020. So some of the ballot measures that other cities pass that don't have a sunset date or don't have a higher majority would be invalid if this happens. So for a lot of cities, it's extremely detrimental, but fortunately, Fortuna's not a situation where we'd see that happen, but we'd still have the other burdens for new taxes coming on and then all taxes and fees, the burden of proving that they're the minimum necessary. So it would be a pretty big deal. It would take a lot of staff time and overall, it would pose a huge challenge for the city. So with that, I'll leave it to the council for any questions.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Johnson and I just attended a League of California Cities conference down in Willets, and this was one of the things that they talked about down there. This will be on the ballot in November and it is very misleading on the ballot. It sounds like it's really good, but it's really not. Almost every city in California and county has an additional tax measure because cities can't run without them. We don't get enough money from the state. So we need these additional funds in order to keep our city running properly and take care of our employees. So pay really close attention to this when this comes up because there's a lot of hidden things in there that aren't good. Does any of the council have any comments?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I can assure you that the employees, the staff at the city of Fortuna do much more than the minimum amount necessary to get the job done. And everyone takes pride in what they do and they know that the better job they do, the least amount of, they, less chance of having to come back and repair something that was just slap dashed together. They do a great job. And I have, in my reading, and I don't know, maybe Merritt knows, has seen it, I have seen nothing addressing the fact that the state of California requires us to maintain reserves to keep our sewer and our water and wastewater systems operating, to be able to repair them in case of a catastrophic failure and to improve them when technology comes along and to help when it comes time when we outgrow what we have. And I haven't seen that addressed in this either. So I don't see that this is put together well and it hasn't very well thought out. And that's part of what has me upset and I'll just stop there. In case, maybe you've read something I haven't seen.
No, I think it just really changes the whole playing field for how taxes are assessed and the burden on the city for demonstrating the need for them and that they're the minimum amount necessary. So just extremely challenging, could make it a lot more difficult for the city to generate more revenue to support public safety and the services that the city provides. So I think we have a pretty high bar right now and to add that extra level of difficulty and complexity is something that we don't need right now.
The citizens of Fortuna, I mean, all of us sitting up here right now and Mike, even though he's not here, we all run into our friends, neighbors, people we go to church with that call us on things. Hey, what's going on here? What are you spending this month? We are held accountable, believe me. And we, I don't see this as well thought out and I'd rather hold my accountability with the public and the people sitting right here, right now than with some guy that's got a grudge to take care of and is trying to rain on everybody's parade.
Okay, I'll open public comment. Anybody in the audience have a comment on this item? CNN will close public comment.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-06. I'd read by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Resolution 2024-06, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna opposing Initiative 21-0042A1, the Taxpayer Accountability Act. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to city managers' report.
Thank you. I have a handful of items to review with the council, but we'll start with the upcoming council meetings. Our next special, our next council meeting is on April 1st. And then our, the next, the next planning commission meeting will be on March 26th at 6 o'clock PM. We have a Measure E meeting tomorrow night, March 19th at 5:30 PM. And those are all at the city council chambers. The Rona Community Recreation Park District did have a special meeting scheduled and it was on the agenda for March 20th, but that was canceled. We were hoping to have recommendations for awarding a consultant contract for, for design of pool facilities, but that's delayed, so there'll be another meeting soon. And then the next Fortuna Business Improvement District FBIT meeting is on March 26th at 8:30 AM. So there's a number of things. I think a lot of folks noticed, we have our chief back from the National Academy, so we're very pleased to have him back and to be able to get his attention on some of our items and learn what he is bringing back from the National Academy. I think that'll trickle out over the next few months and years, so we're very happy to have him back. We're working on the budget development right now. Specifically, some of the things, some of the things that we're moving into with some of our new department heads include some of the fee schedules for community development and reviewing all of the MOUs with our user groups. They're all over the place. So bringing Heather on board and our new recreation supervisor, Courtney Kadel, we really have a lot happening in parks and they're taking a pretty wide view of how they're going about things and really trying to restructure them to make them really great. And so they're, the first piece, because we're in our budget development, is looking at our fees and thinking about how we organize those. So there's a lot there, but it's great to see our new parks management underway. And one of the things that we want to do in the near future is have a workshop on parks. I know that the councils expressed both concerns and optimism and the value of parks. And so I really want to be able to have the council interface and hear what we're thinking and how we're going to approach that. So I'd like to do a special council workshop, maybe even over in the Parks Office in the near future, and give you a little bit more exposure to that staff and how they're thinking about it, how they're going to present kind of their annual metrics. Heather's already looking, preparing for the annual report she'll prepare for next year and thinking about how we track all of our progress. So it's pretty exciting to have somebody with perspective from another agency and also folks who have come through our program, Courtney Kadel, she worked, she came up through our parks program and you probably heard that when I introduced her a few weeks ago, but it's, it's great to have that kind of institutional and community knowledge along with an outside perspective. So that's going very well. We, one of the other things, we have the police interior, I mean, the police, the police operate, the, the new police station, that project is moving along. The interior is essentially complete. We've got some dry weather, so they're able to, they're working on the subgrade and they're working on the paving and following that will be landscaping. So they're getting very close. There's a lot of complexity that is still coming in the forms of transitioning over our phone systems, our IT systems, the OES-regulated 911 systems. It's just, it's like the smallest thing physically, but it's the, one of the more complicated things to get it turned over. And so we're trying to find a way that we can get the police over there and, and have them operating and just really have a quick transition. And so there's a number of us that have a meeting with CalOES to talk about that 911 transition in about a week and a half. We're moving forward with the escrow on the parcel adjacent to the Monday Club. So I believe Aaron, he has the wiring instructions for that and we're moving forward. And so that, we expect that to close in the coming weeks. We're also going to be meeting and talking with Chamber and thinking about the future and how to continue to work on Measure W, the tourism and marketing, how to get the most bang for the buck out of that. And then, let's see, I think that's, I think that's probably it for now. I know there's, there's more to report, but I think I'll just leave it there.
Can't remember anything about, after being in Hawaii for a week.
I might've been gone for.
Well, we welcome you back also. Future agenda items, anybody have any? No? Okay, we'll move on to council.
Mayor Trent, I did have a few agenda items and, and one of those is I, I wanted to have, we expect to have a budget workshop to discuss revenue. We wanted to, the council initially asked to have one special workshop before this meeting, but we'd like to do it in advance of the April 1st meeting, if that's okay. And we'll, we'll send out a calendar appointment to the council members. I mentioned the parks workshop, so that'll be a little further out. We're thinking May or June for that one. And then the other one that I'd like to talk about in the near future is the FBIT annual report and possible modifications. So at the, I'd like to present the FBIT annual report to the FBIT committee next week, but then I'd like to bring it back to the council for recommendations of, you know, how should we consider changing FBIT going forward in the future? And then also, there's an item, we have an item on tonight's agenda that I will ask to continue, which is the negotiation with the city's bargaining unit. So I'd like to continue that for the next meeting to April 1st.
Okay. Okay, council reports. Councilmember Conley?
Thank you. I did have a redact meeting. We've made a few new loans. I just wanted to welcome Chief back. I'm looking forward to what that can bring to the city and help us out in the long run. I also got to take a tour. Brendan, we caught him one time when he was down there and got to take a tour of the police facility. So I, that thing is amazing and I've seen it in sticks and then I got to see it, oh yeah, it's almost done and it's completely different. And I really hope that we open that up to the public before we send them over and give them a nice, good view of that thing because that is an impressive building and it's way bigger than you expect to when you're getting there. So good job with the city on that. And the, getting everything ready, I know their, our parks are flooded like everything else, but today was the first day of baseball season and we got kids out on baseball fields, so good job, everybody involved in getting that all good.
Councilmember Mobley?
I had an RCEA Community Advisory Committee meeting that was four hours long. Biomass was the, was the topic, which is very volatile. You're either for or against it. So that, that'll continue on for the next couple of months for me. I wanted to thank Parks and Rec for the winter break program and the spring break program coming up. It is a huge help and the kids, my granddaughter participates and the staff does an amazing job pulling the kids together, making it fun, informational. So I wanted to appreciate, show my appreciation for that.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Johnson?
Okay. I said a lot already, so I'm probably going to make it fast. I had a historical commission meeting last week and I got to actually talk to Heather, our new Parks and Rec director while she was there and worked with her on that. Some of the interesting things I saw on that was our visitors from, some of them were from Arkansas and Georgia and one was New York City. So that's a long way to go, but they come to Fortuna and they want to see the museum. So it must be getting, the word must be getting out. And one of the exhibits there was a, they're doing an ongoing thing and it's 100 years ago, so 100 years from today, say. And they have newspapers with today's date and what was going on. And the one I got to see was from last week was the Lunar New Year and the Chinese celebration of that and the advertisements from 100 years ago and what was going on in the community. We got some new items in the museum donated. A couple of those things were, there was 29 Auto Club maps from 1910 through 1920. Some of them still had the copyright dates in them of 1915 through 1919. So they were traveling by car even then. And another good item was a 1908 autograph book from a graduate from the Casper Elementary School down in Mendocino Coast from 1908, a graduate, and their autograph book. And I have one from my grandparents that actually had other stuff stuck in it, like a feed bill from a grain retailer in like 1890s and into 19, early 1900s. And I also had a meeting with CalTrance, the North State Deal, and some of those things that were in there, one of them was Clean California and that the grants that were submitted, even though the program is some sunsetting, the grants are going to be active through 2026. And there will be an event in Garberville for, I believe it's a Dump Days event, on April 10th from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. And one in Orleans on the 20th of April from 10:00 to 2:00. And another big item that people will appreciate if you travel over 299 is that Berry Summit is going to have restrooms, vault, toilet, solar lighting and solar EV chargers. And it should be done the summer of '24, so we'll see what happens. But it's supposed to be underway. And there's going to be a lot of work active on both 36 and 299. So when you're traveling, factor in a little relief time for that so that you don't get hung up. You may get hung up, but you won't be late. So, thank you.
Thank you. I had a Humboldt Transit Authority meeting, nothing to report on that. And then the Chamber had their annual dinner a few weeks ago. They honored a lot of businesses and a lot of individuals. The full list of that is on the Chamber's website. And I attended the logging conference dinner with Supervisor Bushnell and that was very interesting and very fun. And then on January 8th of this year, our chief, Dave, began a 10-week FBI Academy at Quantico, Virginia. It's a big honor to be accepted to this. Our chief, probably what, for months, tried to get in good enough shape so he could be there. You know, this isn't, this isn't like the young guys who go to the academy. These are mostly not-so-young guys. But he was out running every day and to get in shape enough to go and he went, which was quite an honor. He graduated the 289th session of this FBI Academy. This academy is for advanced training for law enforcement. So he learned a lot of good things there and we're anxious to see, you know, everything that he's going to bring back to our city. We're very proud of our chief to go there. You might notice that his pants are a little baggy. He did lose a little weight while he was there. And we all just want to say that we're very proud of our chief and we're going to show a short video.
For almost 90 years, this program has served as a bridge that links federal, state, local, county, tribal and international law enforcement. Today, you join the ranks of more than 50,000 graduates from more than 170 countries. You put that in perspective, there are tens of thousands of those yellow bricks on desks and bookcases all across this country and around the world. Your bricks don't just represent a challenge, they are a challenge. A challenge to build on this foundation after you leave the academy. A challenge to stay in touch and to continue helping each other throughout your careers. So this session is ending, but the work is far from over. And it's up to you now to ensure that the network you see in this auditorium grows larger and stronger and that that yellow brick road grows longer and wider. Your jobs are certainly not easy, but today you've got 196 new partners standing by, ready to help in any way they can. And that bond of trust and teamwork and support represents the best of who we are and what we can accomplish when we stand together. You came to Quantico as strangers from different states and different nations, but you leave the FBI Academy today as classmates, brothers and sisters, determined to support each other and stand together in solidarity, no matter what the world throws at you.
KCJ Day, Fortuna Police Department, Fortuna, California.
Session 289, in the spirit of knowledge, courage and integrity, I again offer our gratitude as you take the knowledge and personal and professional bonds you've developed here and build on them to make this country and this world a better place. So congratulations again, session 289.
Once again, we want to thank Chief Dave for his outstanding job and representing the city of Fortuna very well. I'd also like to thank his wife Amber and daughter for the sacrifice they made giving up their husband for, or and dad for three months. And I'd like to thank Lieutenant Everhart for doing a good job on the police department and putting together this video. So with that, we are going to have to, do you want to say a few things?
Yeah, if I could just respond to it. I just, I'll take a real brief moment here. I just want to say, this was an absolutely amazing experience, both life and professional. It's something- It's something that I'll never forget. And I do return inflated with new ideas and new visions for the community and public safety. And so, I promised myself that I would not harass the council or the city manager on my first day back with any of those ideas and just let it resonate a little bit. But I definitely am committed to harassing the council and the city manager in the future and being able to share some of the things that I brought back from Quantico. One of the biggest is, you know, the network that they speak about on that video is, you know, there's going to be times where the city of Fortuna faces things that we've never faced before. And it's always nice to know that you know somebody out there who's gone through that or been able to come up with a new policy or program that has been successful instead of having to reinvent the wheel every time. So, the last thing I'll say is, I just want to use this platform to again, express my deepest gratitude and thank you to my family for the sacrifice. And also, just publicly thank the council, the city manager, my colleagues of the other department heads, the members of the Police Employees Association, my command staff, especially my number two, Lieutenant Everhart, for the overwhelming support over 10 weeks. It's a long time to be gone. I missed home. I'm glad to be home. Obviously, coming home on Saturday, my intention was to be at work first thing Monday morning. God willing, I was able to do that, and it's just really nice to be back. So, thank you all for the support.
Thank you, and welcome back. Okay, we had a closed item, or a closed session item that we're going to, we have to make a motion to continue it to our next meeting.
Make a motion, we continue the closed session item to the next meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll continue that. And now, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.